We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you very much for coming out. If I had to run for mayor this time, I was hoping for public engagement. So it's nice to see everybody out and we hope to see you in the future years to come out and help us with public engagement and to make decisions for your town. So, uh...
Speak up.
Now what's gonna work, now what's gonna work tonight is we're gonna have some opening remarks, we're gonna go through some of the written submissions that we've had, and then if you want to speak, the microphone's here, so what we do is ask you to come up to the microphone, identify yourself, who you are and where you are from, and we'll take as many people as you want, just put your hand up and I'll, we'll call the next one up or do it in the conference order yourself. We're all here for the same purpose, so keep it respectful and no hollering, no bickering, would be greatly appreciated because we are here for the same, all the same reasons, okay? So, moving forward, we'll turn it over to Tom for the opening remarks. Tom?
Yes, actually, I'm turning to go to Chris Millier, the planner for the opening remarks. That's Tom, Chris. Do any of you like Tom?
There you go. You might wanna hold it closer.
So, members of council, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Chris Millier, I'm with the Forsight Group. We're planning and developing consultants who provide planning support to the town, and in this regard, we prepared a background report that was tabled with your town's planning advisory committee. So I'm just gonna, not gonna go through it line by line, I think what I'd like to do is provide more of a context for the balance of the conversation that'll happen tonight in terms of what your town plan has in it relative to the proposal that the applicant has put forward. The information that I'm providing you was provided to the planning committee, the finding committee was responsible for initiating the recommendation that actually came to council and got this process going. So just quickly, we're talking about two separate properties, in total about three acres of land located in the south end on what we're calling Thomas Road or Thomas Road area, includes the area within West Street, Third Avenue, Thomas Road. Two properties, separate pits, they are on the south side of the former DAR right-of-way that is now owned and administered by the province as part of the Trans-Canada Trail. The property that we're talking about is currently vacant, has some modest overgrowth in terms of vegetation, slopes modestly from north to south, and does abut the water, so the javits. Property's held by a numbered company, four, five, seven, six, two, five, one, Nova Scotia Limited. The proposal that we have in front of us for these lands is the construction of a total of 76 residential dwelling units in three structures, two of which would be defined as multiple unit buildings, and the third of which would be typically called a townhouse or a double townhouse or raised townhouse configuration. So we're talking three structures on two lots, excuse me. The proposal calls for the extension of both Third Avenue and, yeah, Third Avenue and West Street, and the construction of a new road connecting those two against the trans- Canada Trail or DAR properties. The town's plan for these areas, like the abutting areas, is for residential development to occur, so it's within what we call the residential designation. There are two or three different designations in the town, it's pretty basic, one of them is residential, another is commercial, and a third is industrial. So in the town, we basically have that hierarchy or range of generalized future land use designations. And it really is just intended to give an overall idea of the type of activity that should go on in different locations, and pretty straightforward, most of the town is designated for residential development. The existing and kind of recognizable commercial cores, either on Victoria or downtown, are identified as industrial, as commercial, and our waterfront, and our traditional waterfront industrial areas are designated for industrial development and particularly marine industrial development. The plan, the town's plan, basically sets low and low-density residential development as the default type of development in the residential designation. The plan also provides for opportunities to apply for higher density, either medium or high-density development. So even though we see that residential is the designation and low-density residential is the primary zone, it is the case across the town, and the town's policy specifically enables us to consider applications like this on a case-by-case basis. So when we do that, when we do have applications, the town plan contains criteria that we use to evaluate proposals for development other than what the default or the base zone is. So that's the process that we're actually going through here. The development agreement is a site-specific approval that responds to a specific proposal, and it's evaluated against standing criteria. So we just don't pick them out of the air and think, that's a great one, we don't like him, we want that, we don't want that. That's not how the process works, the town's plan actually has criteria, and I hope you have at some point, you get a chance to take a look at it, but we're, Policy Implementation Seven sets out the criteria that we use to evaluate all proposals for development agreement, not just this one, but all of them. And we use those criteria to determine whether on the balance, and when I say we, in this case, it's the planning committee, because council needs to yet do its own evaluation, but the planning committee has used to determine on the balance whether the proposal is in keeping with the overall intent for good growth in the community. So Policy IM Seven, if you took a look at the staff report or if you take a look at the town plan, it lays out the criteria. So I'm just gonna hit those kind of at a high level. Some of them are pretty obvious. When we're looking at the suitability of development, is there adequate water, sewer, and road infrastructure present? Development where there is not adequate road, sewer, and water infrastructure is typically called premature. You want development to be on municipal services, and if municipal services aren't present, then proposals to come in for, or proposals that come in for development of those lands are just not timed proper for the most part. In this application, the development calls for the construction of new streets and services. So that is part of the development, part of the development proposal. Those streets and services are to be constructed by the town and under the town's direction and through the town's engineer and public works groups. So the proposal, even though there is no sewer-water present or streets present on the actual properties themselves, they will be built in conjunction with the undertaking of the development, and the town will own that responsibility, and the town will comply with its own bylaws in terms of the standards that those services will meet. So at the time the development undertaking is undertaken, the sewer-water and street infrastructure will be adequate, even though it is not present at this point. Fire protection and emergency response is another kind of component in that public safety and infrastructure. The proposal has been sent, as I said, to the Public Works, it has been reviewed by the fire department, and again, the proposal, which at the point when it's initiated, assuming that the town is responsible for the construction of roads, sewer, and water, will provide adequate protection and ability for emergency response. One of the important components in terms of the higher-density development and the type of building that's entailed there for the multiple unit is to ensure that the fire equipment that we do have has an ability to go in and out safely and that they've got the ability to respond to the type of emergencies that might occur. We'd like to understand the potential impact of the development once it's constructed on things like school infrastructure, on community facilities and resources, so more of the community asset type of issue. At present, our school capacities by documentation or by data are at the higher end of the range, but they're not at excess at this point. The development that we're considering here, multiple unit primarily, likely one, two, and three-bedroom, and likely a mix of single couples and families, we're probably looking at, what I'm gonna say, without any evidence of numbers or occupancy targets provided by the applicant, we're probably looking, we will be looking at a potential increase in school enrollment requirements, and with a population of somewhere between 180 and 225 people, again, an estimate on persons per unit in terms of the total number of 76 units, we're probably looking at an additional requirement for somewhere between five and 10 school-aged individuals that will be new to the community or could be new to the community, in addition to our existing enrollment requirements. So that would be across the age spectrum, and at present, we don't have any evidence that the school, our school, our current school capacities could not accommodate another 10, I'm gonna use that as a target, 10 individuals. That's not to say that we don't have a high number or higher numbers of individuals in particular classes, in particular cohorts at the school, but overall, the school capacity has the ability to absorb that type of increase. And again, it would be over time, and that full impact if we assume that only new residents to the community moved into the units. In terms of, again, as development occurs, impacts arising from the development, the Policy IM Seven identifies that the adequacy of road networks adjacent to the development is important to note. As I said, the town will assume the responsibility for the construction of both the new infrastructure and any upgrading that might be required on existing adjacent infrastructure. I will say that a traffic impact study has not been prepared or submitted with the application, so like the school estimates, when we want to try to gauge and quantify what the potential impact might be, in terms of the activity generated from 76 units, there are standard estimates that engineering models use for traffic generation. In general, and I'm not a traffic impact modeling engineer, and as I said, we do not have that data with, from the applicant, but generally, we're looking at an increase in peak traffic flow per 100 units, so this is not 100 units, this is 76, but the models typically show peak traffic movement increase for 100 units is somewhere between 30 and 50 traffic movements, so in and out of a car. The proposed roads will meet the town's minimum requirements in terms of the right-of-way with trufflewood to accommodate full traffic flows, so the new traffic movements generated will be actually the only traffic movements on those portions of West Street and Third Avenue. St. George Street will, of course, receive increased flow. We do not have a model on which way traffic will go, how it will be distributed throughout the rest of the town's road network, but again, the town will be responsible for both the existing and the new road network, and the design will be approved by the town's engineer and meet projected standards that our current town municipal specifications have for road construction. So it's not to say there won't be impact, there will be, there will be new traffic generated, there will be traffic diverted from other areas of the town as well, so traffic might be reduced from those areas where people who were moving into these units used to live. There will be an adjustment on the routes that people travel, but at this point, there's nothing to indicate that the, either new or the existing, infrastructure couldn't accommodate that. The strategy wants to make sure that new development has a net positive impact on the finances of the town. The town has certainly shown a willingness and is working with the developer in regards to promoting development, promoting an increase to the tax base of the town, and I would suggest probably with the long-term hope that the net benefit through taxes will offset the initial costs that have been, that will be associated with the property. With respect to the lot itself, the strategy is focused on making sure that there isn't anything on a property relative to the proposal that's put forward that would otherwise make development inappropriate. So a large water course, a water body, extremely steep slopes, those types of environmental features, as I said, the property is, has modest slope, modest overgrowth, and has been inhabited, although sparsely in the general area, you know, development has occurred over time, it's been very modest, but we haven't identified any environmental or site constraints that would make the development of the property inappropriate over time. The town does not have an Environmental Assessment Act requirement, so there is no policy that actually requires invasive testing, documentation, or that type of thing, that's actually more a provincial requirement for much larger undertakings than residential development. The developer is responsible for satisfying themselves that the proposal that they're putting forward, they can actually carry up soil bearing capacity and that type of thing. The town isn't obligated to guarantee that any particular land is developable, but the strategy wants us and requires us to assess at a higher level whether there's anything on the property that we're aware of that would make it inappropriate. So environmental suitability of the property has been considered, there isn't any features there that would be prohibited from the town's perspective. So I guess what I'm doing is highlighting the criteria and identifying both the community interests, the actual physical requirements of the development, respective infrastructure and site, and the potential impacts that development takes. So all of those are included in your Policy IM Seven. As I said from the outset, it's not that every single one of those needs to be checked at 100%, they're intended to identify and assist the committee, whose recommendation's been brought forward to the council, on whether or not a proposal for a particular area, a particular proposal for a particular area, is generally within the intent of the strategy and generally represents a positive advance for the development of the community. So in that regard, the committee's recommendation was that in light of the relevant policies, so those zoning policies that allow for applications like this to come forward, and in particular, Policy IM Seven, Implementation Seven, which is your general criteria for development agreements, the committee's recommended that the town enter into a development agreement with the applicant to permit the construction of 76 dwelling units, generally in accordance with the plans that have been submitted with the application.
All right, thanks, Chris. We'll move on to the acceptance of the written submissions, and Tom, if you want to go through those, please.
Okay, you have written submission from Tim Peck.
You'll have to speak up, cause you're just mumbling.
Sorry about that. We have written submissions, and we have one from Tim Peck, 59 St. George Street, one from Kathy Peck, 59 St. George Street, one from Jenny Willis, 27 Thomas Road, one from Melanie McNaughton, one from Uby Mandella, sorry if I'm pronouncing your name, one from Bill and Debbie Freeman, one from Erica Tebbett and Rob Westgate, 47 Third Avenue, Mary Ronald, 51 Montague Road, and we also have a petition. And these have all been circulated to the council members and also have the printed copies that are supplied on the table there.
Can you pass some of those down, if people are here all the way down the street?
I'd like to have one too.
Thank you. Chris.
Thanks.
Nope.
It's taking...
Whoops, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah. My story's through there. I didn't hear you sit on the floor.
Oh, there were no sound, I don't know if I...
What, sorry? Sound, they can't hear you, or anybody. They're all the way down the street here. Just a lot of people back here.
So, so the written submissions will be taken under consideration by the council when they deliberate on whether to enter into the agreement. So, the next was, acceptance of any oral...
Yeah, so if anyone has any oral submissions that they'd like to come up and speak to us, I would step forward and come up to the desk here and address myself, and then question, your question will be answered, if we can answer.
So is this questions?
Yeah, question, yeah. Okay, so just come up to the microphone, identify yourself and where you're at.
Sure. Uh... Mr. Deputy Mayor, Council members, I'm Dr. Martin Vincent, I'm a semi-retired research scientist, I currently live in Digby. I've been here four years, I love the town, it's a great town, but I think, let me address the elephants in the room, and that is, although there are certainly a number of issues regarding your comments, the main issues, I think, are the, is the infrastructure for medical, dental, and all of the other kind of things that any new influx of people would require. So I can certainly understand a small development to attract these kind of individuals, but I've been here four years, I'm still waiting for a family doctor, I've no doubt many, some people here have been waiting far longer than I. So if you, if we get all these people here, how's it gonna affect the town's ability to administer to their medical health, their dental health? At the moment, it's not really doing anything near enough for the community that is already here. So what I would say is it would be a good idea to, I certainly understand the reason to expand or develop town, but at a smaller pace to attract the kind of personnel required to support a larger expansion at a later point. If we get all these people here, where are they gonna get their medical help, where they're gonna, certainly Digby Hospital is, they do a great job there, no disrespect to them, but there just aren't enough people to help the townspeople as it is. So I think we're kind of closing the door after the horse has bolted, if we get this enormous expansion, how on earth is the town going to cope with that? And, you know, how are we going to keep people if they arrive here? I think $38 an hour is what a registered nurse gets at the moment, how are we gonna keep them here if we do get them here? So I'd like to suggest that it would be better to build the infrastructure, as well as the roads and drainage systems, build the personnel infrastructure before you start authorizing large developments. Okay, thank you so much.
No medical... Twenty here. He's saying slow it down.
My question is only business-oriented for the town. My name is Chris Taboro, I live outside of town, but obviously have some interest in this town. This gentleman covered my first question, the hospital. We're gonna increase the population by 10% in the town of Digby. It's significant when you put it in that number, so hopefully, there's talks going on with the province too. My second one is cost recovery. I've listened to Chris, it was great, said he has taxes and investment and all that, but many of those projects, the investors are here because, of course, there is money to be made, they'll be here until there's money to be made. My question is, what is the town considering to secure cash securities in the event that the investor bails out halfway or three-quarters of the way after the town has invested millions of dollars in new infrastructures, that the project dies for whatever reason? Because if, I'm all for expansion, however, if this scenario ever happens, the citizen and the businesses are gonna be stuck to foot the bill to recover from a business that just left camp and went somewhere else, in the event it ever happens. So my question is, or my recommendation is, is there any talk to secure any significant cash amount that will be repayable to the investors only once their project is complete to ensure financial security for the citizen and the businesses?
So some of that will be covered in the development agreement, not necessarily the security or deposits, but we are looking at not developing like public roads at the same time, whichever he, the developer decides to develop first, which I believe is the townhouses on the waterfront, we would only do one road. So to get them in, if they're not gonna develop more, we would develop the other road as well, and put the infrastructure.
So no security?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else have any, anything else anyone say? Come on up.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. I speak on behalf of the aggrieved in the town, the people who live in the South End.
Say your name, please.
Oh, Jennifer Gillis, yep. And I just wanted to touch on a few of the concerns that we have down on the South End. The main concern being that it's a three-acre lot of concrete. It's, uh, there's no green space, there's no balconies, there's nowhere for animals to go, uh, there's nowhere for, well, anything, there's no green space, and it is a low-density area right now. So our concern is, some of the things that he addressed earlier about the traffic, the environmental issues, we'd like to see a feasibility report. There's probably going to be a lot of noise when they're building. We'd just like to see what's going to happen with all of that. I've been looking into the Department of Municipal Affairs at the approval process, and I understand that the application for a development agreement is $700, and then they also have to pay the $500 for, uh, advertising. So I would assume that that advertising would have gone to the town. So when there was this opportunity to get public participation, that should have been advertised, and perhaps it was advertised on your webpage, or maybe in the Chronicle Herald, I'm not really sure where that was advertised, but I understand that the only two citizens that, residents that were there are the appointed people. So that is concern that we're just finding out about this now, instead of finding out about it during the public participation opportunity. And then the next thing is the first reading, in which you can either change the bylaw, or you can change the zoning, or you can decide to go into a development and enter a development agreement. This is the, I don't know if anyone can, well, that's too small for anyone to see. But then, from that point, they needed to give us 14 days' notice, in which they had $500 to advertise, to get this information out so that we knew about this hearing, and still, it was advertised on their website and maybe somewhere else, but I'm not sure where. So I'd be curious to know how that $500 was spent, and what that $500 is for. And then, what I understand, I've been reading, you know, this municipal affairs, and I understand that if it's passed tonight, that the town councillors are saying, yes, we like this drawing, we don't mind there's no green space, we don't mind that there's, there hasn't been an environmental report, we like this building, we like that it's all concrete, and we send it to the municipality, and they're done with it. And then from there, the municipality will, they'll have to apply for a building permit through the municipality. And then the next question is, is there anyone at the municipality who can inspect a building like this? Someone who can inspect underground parking, and elevator, all of these types of things? So, and then the very last thing that we're mostly concerned about is this voting. We kind of feel like the residents are losing their voice, we weren't notified about the public participation, and we did send out a petition, mostly in the South End. We got 123 town residents who have, who have signed the petition to say that they want their voice heard, and they want this to go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
I'm a long-time person from this town. I grew up here, and my history of this town is, has gone downhill ever since. Now, questions to you people over here. First of all, who are the owners of this consortium? Who are the...
See, I have to ask a question to the council, not the...
Okay, you guys know who the owners are? Where are they from? Rumors I've been hearing is it's a company out of British Columbia. Is that true? I don't care if it's registered Nova Scotia. I want to know where the money's coming from that's going to set this thing up. Is it coming from British Columbia, United States, China, or wherever? That's the first thing I want to know. You got an answer? Okay, you don't have an answer. Good. Second thing is, apparently, we just heard that the town is responsible for the infrastructure, sewer, roads, and so on into it. Here's my issue with it, and the citizens of this Digby have the same problems. Any street in this town, you drive your vehicle over it, and what is it? The bumpiest town, I think, in the country. Why is that? Well, here's the reason, folks. The infrastructure of this town is so old, and should have been replaced. King Street, I was told, because I built a new house up on that hill, that street was supposed to have been done around 2010. Never got done. Now, if we're taking our tax money to build these roads down there, all that infrastructure, I say no. You fix your own town first, and once you do that, then you have no problem. Next question. Who are the people going to live in this apartment? Where are they coming from? Can you tell me?
Well, right now, I know some contractors have a weightiness of 100 people, and their residents here...
So you can assure us that the people that are going to go into these apartments, the majority of them are going to be local people that are looking for places to live here in Digby?
Can't guarantee that.
Can't guarantee it. First of all, you've got 70-some units, and some of the units will have families and so on and so forth. Where are they going to work? Where are they going to work? We have no industries here, and the industries that we have, we've been relying on forever, is fishing. We used to have the tourist industry, and that's all gone to hell. And I'll tell you one thing, if you want to go to a meeting and see what I can show you the way this town was, you wouldn't believe how great it was. And I could tell you everything that's been done in this town to get to where we are now. I'm sorry, but I'm getting old, and my attitude has changed from what it was, because I had high hopes for this place. And we all know the stories, the old stories, Michelin, we all know those old stories. I've investigated all, I know why they didn't get here, and I don't have to go on about that. But here's something else. This is so important to this town that, instead of us, and remember, this is what democracy is, people, democracy is supposed to be for the people and by the people. We vote our representatives that are sitting in front of us to represent us. So we put all our faith in these people here to make good decisions for us. Now, if they're making good decisions, we have no problems. But when we find out that decisions that were made did nothing for us, then changes have to be made. Now, what do we have to do? Something as important as this should be brought to the people in what's called a referendum. And the people of the town will decide whether this should go through or it shouldn't, because this is a big deal to this town. And when I grew up here, there were almost 5,000 people living within the town limits. Our population now is lucky, we've got 2,000. Our school systems were full. The population of high school, when I went to it, was over 1,000. Look at the population now. Yes, we're going to have an increase in children coming in, and we've already, this has already started now, because we have a lot of new people in town that have children in the school system. This consortium that they're talking about, there'll probably be more. So that's going to increase that. So we've got to find out, where is all this money going to come from? Now, a lot of us are paying high taxes, and I know I'm paying high taxes. I'm paying over $8,000 a year to live on the hill and to have a view of Digby. Okay? And there's other people in town in the same situation, but this isn't the town's fault, by the way. This is your Nova Scotia government's fault, because they did this across the whole province. So if we don't stand up and fight for these things, nothing's going to change.
Public engagement.
Pardon me?
Public engagement.
Exactly. And our representatives, like you, Mike, and the rest of you here, and the new councillors coming in, have to work for us. And when you go to a politician, and I've been to a lot of politicians in my lifetime, I even had Tim Houston at my place, right, Brian? Tim Houston, our premier, was to my house when Brian was building it. And we had a good talk. Brian talked about affordable housing, and he's actually building three units over there now. I talked to Tim because I said, "Tim, you've got a great idea for fixing the medical system, but this isn't going to take four years, it's going to take a lot more time to do that." But I said, "The second thing you said when you were campaigning, I don't care what it's going to cost." I said, "Tim, you're my type of man." I said, "I lived that way all my life, I didn't care what it cost, but I knew how to get the money." So what I'm saying is, we have to put pressure on the provincial government for them to get their hands down in our area and start helping this town out. And the biggest problem, like, I was actually thinking about running premier, but I'm so fed up that I'm getting out of here. Yeah, I put my place up for sale, I don't give a shit, she sells, she doesn't, I don't care. But the thing is, what you have to do is you have to fight for everything you get, just like it was in the old days. And you can't be nicey-nicey anymore. Okay? And one thing you can do is you get the media involved, you want to get these things to happen. And the other thing Digby needs, and I hate to talk about it, well, I got to talk about it, I didn't even know about a lot of these meetings. Why? I don't go on Facebook, I don't have anything to do with that crap. I'd like to see the old Digby Courier come back, where this could Google to citizens. Went to the post office. Went to the post office today, in the mail, I get my Claire Shopper. I go through the Claire Shopper, read everything in it, and I'm thinking, well, why couldn't Digby have something like that? And the Claire Shopper's free to us. Well, how do they get their money? Investments, fight companies. Why couldn't we have that again? And then we get the stuff out. Peter knows, because Peter grew up with me, we used to have, know about everything, we knew about every community and everything like that. Now we don't know anything. So I better shut up for now, but anyway, but anyway, this is important, and I understand trying to get more tax-based money in here. We lost a big hunk of our taxes, you know where, stalled the Pines Hotel. That tax base is gone. Now, this here will help out a little bit, but look what we've got to put into it to get that little bit and take away from what we need done right now in this town. And if I were involved in the council or anything like that, my first step would be to the provincial government, and I'd start putting pressure on them, and if they didn't want to play ball, it's called Global CTV, CBC. You get them involved, and things will change. Strength comes in numbers. And you know, if you look at your past, we have been divided and conquered. So the people have to get together and do something about this, and with the help of our representatives in front of us, we can do it. Now, this whole idea here, I would say, let it go through if we had the financial base to do that, but also help what we need done here. And the only way you can do that, Mike, is provincial government.
And we have applied for grants through the provincial government for our...
Exactly. But applying is one thing.
Oh, I know. You're right.
But...
They say it's a very important thing, provincial government, but we're certainly no help.
But you make the help through the media.
That's right.
And the reason why I decided not to run as the council, or even a mayor, because of all the hoops you have to jump through to get what you need. I'm like a bulldog. If I want something done, I don't stop until I get it done. Okay? That's me, I grew up that way. If you said no, I said yes, then I'd go to this one. Will you do this for me? No, I'd go to this one. Will you do this one? Oh, yeah, we'll talk about it, then you're my person. Anything else I need, down the road, same thing. You want to do this and whatever. But anyway.
Thank you, Gary.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Thank you for helping out. I just want to say that, you talk about the Claire Shopper and advertising, how we do that here, under the MGA, the Claire Shopper doesn't qualify for advertising for projects like this.
Yeah, but we could put it under a different name, right? Under a different name, like the Gary Gazette or some crazy thing. But I mean, there's something that's got to be done. I'm sorry.
Gary, you're a good one to follow.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, council.
Your name?
Pardon? Kathy Peck. And as you know, one of my letters was submitted, one of the applicants that are very concerned about this build, primarily because I live at 59 St. George Street, and I am directly affected by this build. And I have lived at 59 St. George since 1997, I've raised my family, and I've worked in this community. I knew of the property being sold about a year ago, and later that it was going to be a large development. To show my concern, I contacted Tom Ossinger, our town development officer, who assured me that nothing had been presented, and that we would be in contact when something was, such as this application that is before us tonight. I was shocked when I learned from a neighbor the scope and size of this project. My husband and I requested a package from the town and reviewed the material, and I found it shocking and distressing to think, in one year, this beautiful scenic, futuristic seaside town could be transformed into a high-density residential area. And there are a lot more questions that need to be answered here tonight. Tom Ossinger admitted to us in a face-to-face meeting that this was an excessive overdevelopment and needs to be shaped into a smaller-scale project. We were denied access from the beginning stages of this proposed development back in March, when I inquired about it. It appears that these buildings will be some 60 feet-plus height, blocking many views of the scenic landscape that helps define our town. Many of our residents, including ourselves, will lose nature's beauty to what appears to be... to be track-style-type housing. The proposal talks about green space, but where? And in my meeting with Tom, he admitted that the developers had not given enough consideration to green spaces. Other considerations need to be given, like that's been mentioned this evening, traffic management, to this side of our town. Our current streets are not wide enough for two cars to pass each other. We don't even have sidewalks. These are other developmental considerations we need to be taking seriously. What is the cost to the town and the residents who live here versus the benefits? Roads, sidewalks, septic water, and power are all incurred expenses to the town. There needs to be more detail provided to us that are not stated in this proposal. From my recent investigations, we have heard of several developments that were big plans that never happened. One of them was a large expense to our town. Could this be another one? What are the guarantees that this project will be finished? Help us understand the process. I inquired about this development months ago, and I was overlooked many times. Town councillors, you were voted by the residents who live here now. The town has a moral obligation to defend the interest of its existing residents, not an outside interest for profit. Do you believe me? And if you do, please clap. We are for reasonable and environmentally sustainable housing development for this area, but not this. Prove to me the benefits outweigh the costs. Our town is changing and growing, and it is tempting to jump at this and any opportunity. I believe we are all in agreement that we have to provide safe places for individuals looking for affordable living accommodations. But we, the town, need a solid foundation of policy for these new and changing times. I would ask that you take my concerns and the concerns of our community members at large that are represented here tonight seriously. The future of our scenic seaside town depends on your leadership and vision with a moral obligation to affirm an open process. And in my opinion, it did not happen. Thank you.
Can I talk from back here? I'm loud.
Sure, can you go ahead. Your name, please.
I just sometimes like to show off and say something positive because...
Get your name, please.
Oh, sorry, I'm Beth Earl, and I live in Digby. I do live on the north side of Digby, so I acknowledge that it won't have the same impact. But I think my concern here is that, for quite a few years, I was involved in the Hospital Foundation, and whenever, part of the problem of getting professionals to come to this community is the very fact that there is not a good housing inventory for professionals, whether they be medical professionals or other. I just think about what am, where am I going to live when I decide to sell my house? Because I won't live in the same house all the time. And I have several times heard about developments that were supposed to happen in Digby and then didn't. For example, out by the Pines, lots of talk about building going on out there. I've heard different stories about that, what that is. I don't know why. The RCMP, I had heard that that was out by the RCMP. Ah, by the RCMP. I had heard that that was because it took too long to get through the development process. Like, and I think about, where will I live? And I don't know. Like, if there's a development that comes up in somewhere like Cornwallis or Annapolis, maybe that's where I'll have to go if there's not housing here that I want to live in that's, you know, an apartment-type housing. So, you know, I think it's really important that everybody keeps saying, because I ran through all these things, and I keep hearing, "Oh, we're, we're fine with development. It's just not this development." So, and maybe that was the same case that I heard up by the RCMP, and I don't know what the challenge is out by the Pines. But, you know, there's, and I know we need affordable housing, but it's not that you have a choice between one or the other. We need all levels of housing. And I don't know what that looks like, because probably if my view was going to be impacted, I might be thinking a little differently. But somehow, there ha, you know, there has to be development here, and it's got to go somewhere. And I don't know the answer to that, but I don't think that everybody, every time that something like this comes up, that we just say, "We can't have it because we don't have this or we don't have that." And I mean, we do need, obviously, a greater tax base if we're going to work on our, on our streets. There are, you know, those are kind of chicken and egg kind of issues. How do you, what do you do about the roads if you don't have the tax base? How do you develop the tax base if you don't do the development? You know, those are all those kinds of things. So really, that's kind of, yeah, I think that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else that would like to say anything tonight?
Yeah, good question.
Sure.
Marjorie Neal. I just want to know, what, what is the cost of affordable housing? What are we, what if they...
This isn't affordable.
Well, it was supposed to be. I understand, affordable housing.
The next, the next, the next one is about affordable housing.
What next one?
The thing they're talking about, NAS.
Oh, there's...
Yeah.
Can we turn the heat down in here?
Yeah. Open the windows?
Yeah.
So I can't tell you what the rent is on this building, because it is obviously a private business as well, so...
Well, that's my concern. We hear about affordable housing, but then we end up with private owners, then that goes out the window or out the door.
I know, I know. It can be addressed...
I think we need a guarantee that that's what it's for.
It can be addressed in the, in the development agreement.
No, but it just infuriates me. The high end is for sure.
All right, that, yeah, we'll talk about the next one, but like I say, it is a private business. If they do apply through the government for, for housing, there has to be a certain percentage of the apartments that have to be low income. And there is, there is a rate, I believe it's designated at about $1,100 is a, is a low housing rate. From the province, that's where the province is. So...
Can we open our doors? Like, is that a possibility?
Open that side door, the exit door, get air through here?
Someone just let someone. Feel it. Good, Margaret? That's okay.
Do you want to ask a question back here?
If you'd like to come forward a little bit, would be great. That's you.
Troy, come here first, bro, come on. No, just joking.
Is there a Plan B site? Or is this the only site that's on the table?
This is the, this is their, they own the property, so...
Thank you, council. My name is Shane Weir. Shane Weir, everybody. I'm running for council this year as well. Not here to brag about it, just saying. What I've been doing, I've been walking around, door to door, campaigning. And what I hear is taxes are too high. We don't have a place to live. One lady told me three years she's been waiting for low income. Three years. Is this the fix? No. She told me she's subsidized at $600, and they moved it up to $750, and she doesn't know she can pay it. You understand? It's crazy. Is something like this going to be in that ballpark, is what I was wondering? Is it going to look at the $1,000 range or the $1,500 range? Because honestly, it was 100 people that said that to me. 100 people said that to me, at least in our town. I honestly didn't know what to say to them. I was like, I, I couldn't believe it. I hope that we discuss this. Because they're not going to be able to move into something like that. That's what I'm getting at.
And that is, that is what the government gives low income for, for housing.
But do we want just more low income? Is that what we want? We just want to bring more people in, more low income? Let the province pay us to live here? Just my thoughts and walking around, bringing up. Thank you.
And again, good, good point, Shane, when it comes to social services and that, and that rate, because that is the actual rate for some landlords in here. As I can tell you, that's exactly what they get from the government. And my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, low income for new apartments that apply is 1,100. That's what the province has set, 1,100.
I have one last question.
Yes, Jane.
Is there going to be a vote on this tonight?
It goes on to the next council meeting, and it is under business arise. So this is a public hearing, and then we go into that meeting tonight.
We're asking you, is there a vote on this tonight, or are you putting it off?
According to this year, the second final reading is tonight, and then there would be a vote.
So you won't, you won't put it off to, because there's so many people concerned, you're not going to put it off, you're going to still vote?
That will be at council time if they decide to postpone, if that's up to council.
And how does that work when there's only four of you? What if it's tied?
Tied, my understanding is it's defeated.
Defeated what?
It's a defeated motion if it's tied. Right? One thing, yes, the mayor is not here tonight, so we'll see what happens to our council. The mayor's been through the process with us, so we'll see what happens at council meeting, if that happens or not.
I would like to speak. For any of you that don't know me yet, my name's Randy Harris. I'm running for town council. And I wanted to ask the current council about the development they're planning on doing in Southend. Can the town council pay to get an independent environmental survey done of the land first?
So according to, to Tom, the developer has already done the due diligence with the environment side.
So there's been a survey done, environmental?
That, I'd have to ask the developer.
Who's the developer?
Developer's right there. Thank you for the conversation.
I don't get shot when you know me.
Yeah.
So if you'd be able to answer that question?
I can answer any questions you want.
Sure.
Are you, are you planning on doing the environmental survey?
Why don't you start with the beginning? Don't start in the middle of the story. So I'm not even going to waste my time.
I just want to know...
My time is extremely valuable. You either...
Listen, sorry. Hey, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Can I let them build?
Please.
No, I, I appreciate your, your question. The point of the matter is, I had nothing to do with the politics of your town. I have absolutely nothing to do with it. They gave me a requirement in order for me to make this application, and I fulfilled every requirement on that application.
Well, you're the developer. You're not going to do a survey to see if the environmental...
Already done, provincial required environmental study that had to be done, which is a phase one environmental for that property. And all that entails is if it, if, in order to go to a phase two, it would have had to have been used at some point during time commercial, which it wasn't, to my understanding and to the history of the property. So they're more concerned with, they're more concerned with any type of contaminant that may have been put on that soil at any point in time. So when it comes to the actual, what seems to be a concern, is the structural integrity of the property itself. So my structural engineers, and when we get to the next step, we do a very comprehensive soil study. So we do soil profiles, we do soil studies to make sure that the buildings, in fact, are going to be built on sufficient soil. That's, that's all, that's all way past this. And that building that everyone keeps referring to, that's a concept drawing. If you looked at what was presented, we had to produce something for the footprint. We had to figure out where we could fit a building, how we could fit a building, what's the biggest building we could build. That's what that is.
And the ugliest one.
As far as how it's going to look when it's finished, it'll be, will be, that'll be up to the architects and the designers, what they decide to do as far as how it's going to blend in with the environment.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, we'll, so again, why, please, we'll, we'll address the council, and thank you for your answer.
So your, your biggest question was about the rent.
Yes.
Okay? So I do not build subsidized housing. I don't build subsidized housing. Okay? I don't get involved with the government. I work with private money and private investors. That way, we control what we build, we control our own rents. We're not told what we can and can't do. My rents for my buildings, they begin at $1,250 a month, and that's inclusive. That's your heat, your hydro, your parking, everything is all in the building. And then they fluctuate depending on where it is in the building and what size apartment it is. As far as accessibility goes, my entire first floor of the, either one of those buildings is being designed for accessibility for people who need different types of living style. That's not mandated. I do it anyway.
How many of these do you own, sir? Sorry.
Can we say?
Excuse me.
Out of order.
Out of order. You have to address the questions to the council, please, not, not to the developer.
Deputy Mayor, I was just going to ask about that. Is not the process that the person who's speaking address comments to the council?
That's right.
Because they've sort of gone off that, and now we're having dialogues between people.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
My name's Gordon Grace, and I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the nature trail. Who's going to have access to the trail? And what limitations are towards this development? And another thing I'd like to say, before there was any vote taken, I think there should be an environmental assessment done to find out if it's feasible before we go through any progress or any vote. Because apparently, from what I can understand, a lot of these people haven't been included into this process until just now. And it seems to me you're acting a little premature in your process than to have some proper answers given to the community. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Gordon. When it comes to the trail, it will have no effect on the trail other than the road going across it, right?
If you have 76 apartments, and you're going to, you say, to each house or each apartment is going to have one car. So that's going to be 78 cars going to cross that nature trail. And who's going to give them permission to cross that trail? Because when you gather from this, the railway people, there are certain stipulations put on the town, what they can do or what they can't do with it. And there's no clarification what's going to transpire there. And the people in the town deserve to know that.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the trail is a little railway bit.
Peaked up service with the area.
The rail trail, or nature trail, whatever we want to call it, the town is a letter of authority from Department of Natural Resources and to maintain the trail. It's a multi-use trail, and so it's not much different than the, than, than the train tracks were in. They come to different intersections within town and cross the, it's going to be the same, same, same idea. It's just going to be another intersection between the trail and the streets.
Putting the roads across that, you're not just walking across.
No, well, we, we, we cross the trails, well, trail, cross the streets.
78 cars a day. Anyway, that's a point, issue, that people like to have some question energy.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, sir.
My name is Alex Chapman. I actually had no intention of speaking here tonight. I'm here supporting family, and I feel very strongly about this as well. Uh, I'm here supporting family, and I feel very strongly about this as well, as I imagine most of the people behind me do. I would like to speak on, frankly, what feels like some of the ignorance that might have been shown here this evening, and some things that may have been skipped. I won't touch on the environmental survey, because that's been covered enough, so no need to be a dead horse on that. I think that's a very fair argument, that that should be considered. The fact that the town does not have an official requirement for an environmental survey is, it's, it's disgusting. I mean, we should be considering environment, everybody wants to talk about environment in federal elections, provincial elections, whatever. It always seems to be a talking point, why is it not this evening? Why are we not talking about environmental impact on everything? For the sake of putting a target on my back, I'm building a new home at the moment. And you can be darn sure that people ask me how my home was going to affect the environment around me. Why are those questions not being asked? Or if they are being asked, why aren't they being asked in a, in an official capacity? Um, fire, I respect the fire department here in Digby immensely. I feel like those men and women hold this community up on their back in form of safety, and I think we really need to appreciate them and value them. I'm not saying they're not capable, but they are a volunteer fire department, who, yes, I sincerely hope they are well-funded, and I sincerely hope that they are well-trained, and I know they are, and I'm sure they are. But the question does have to be asked, are they capable of providing emergency services to a large, multi-story, industrial, with underground parking apartment? I'm not saying they're not, but has that question been asked? Or, if it hasn't been asked in an official, everything that seems to be happening this evening, it sounds to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I'd like to be wrong, it sounds like the town has put everything forward to the developer, and just said, make sure you check these boxes. But it doesn't sound like there's been a lot of follow-up. Schools, the argument of we will not add capacity, or not add too much capacity to our school system, is ridiculous. I have a young child. I am at the age where many of my friends have young children. I know how full the school system is. Please do not say we're going to add trailers to our schools, 'cause that seems to be the Band-Aid fix for everywhere. It doesn't solve the problem, you can't add more children to a classroom and say, it's okay, we're not over capacity. Yes, you are. It's happening in the province in many areas, I do not know Digby, so I won't speak to it. But it is happening in other areas where the pre-primary program is being moved into other schools, because the elementary schools are at capacity, and they found other areas in other schools. I don't know what's happening in Digby, I won't speak to that. But, the argument that schools are not over capacity certainly needs to be reevaluated. Because that, that is not true. Schools are over capacity, ask the teachers, they are tired, and their classes are full. Medicare's been covered, thank you very much, I won't go any further into that, other than we all know the healthcare status in our town. And that's not necessarily to blame the town, or to blame the province, it's an entire system, there's no one person at fault for that. But, official capacities need to be taken to ensure that we are addressing these concerns. And it feels like, and like I said already, and this will be my closing point, it feels like all these questions may have been asked with very little formal applications to prove or to assess these things. So I would petition the town, and I would petition the community members, ask the questions, get the answers, get an official answer, get an official fire report, get an official environmental survey, get an official traffic program, or traffic analysis. The town has said no traffic analysis has been done, but we think it's gonna be okay. Where is the actual guarantee in that? Anyways, like I said, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I appreciate you taking my time, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Anyone else here to talk about this subject?
Sure, I just wanted to say something about fire, and he's got a good point. My buildings are designed with a five-hour burn time. The code right now is one hour. Which is why when the fire department reviewed my application, they were quite impressed with the fact that we are building to that standard and to that level. So it does help, doesn't solve the problem, but it certainly solves the problem.
Thank you. Alright.
I have one more question.
Sure, Jane.
So, um, was it at, I'm trying to understand, like, through this, um, agreement approval process, was it at the first reading when there was a motion put forward to, um, to vote on this? Or, like, who voted for that, was that the, what, did the council do that? Or, 'cause it says here that you can either amend the land use bylaw, so amend the zone, or you can, um, enter the agreement, so who, um, who put the motion forward for that?
Let's go through the procedure, please, for everyone.
Okay, so, under this, you can, the rezoning process and the development agreement process are essentially the same process. And so, basically, an application, any application for a development agreement or for rezoning, is, comes to the development officer. Now, the development officer reviews the, the application. It is then sent to our planning consultant to review it. He then, uh, let the applicant know whether there's information that is required, and that this is before it goes to the, anywhere other than the office. And then we go to, then once it's been satisfied by my, by the development officer and the planner, that the application is complete. It then is referred to the planning, the last year's made, and put on their agenda.
Okay, so I still don't understand, did you change the zone already then?
No.
Okay, 'cause it says in here, um, the council gives notice of intention to amend the land use bylaw or enter the agreement, so it doesn't say, it's, this comes, this comes from the Nova Scotia, um, uh, municipal affairs.
That's why, that's why the process, it can be either rezoning or a development agreement.
Okay, so then at the first reading, then this is when somebody from the council put a motion forward to give the zoning, and then do the agreement?
The, the thing is, it's based on the application. If the application is for a rezoning, that's the same process, but that's what we get, deal with, rezoning a piece of property or an area, right? If it's a development agreement, which is what was applied for in this circumstance, then yes, we follow the same, same process. Goes to the PAC, the PAC reviews the process, and they either make a recommendation to council, or make a recommendation to council, uh, whether it's for or against. And when that recommendation goes to council, council then gives, based on the recommendation, and in this case, it was a recommendation to enter into a development agreement. Right, so council gave what is called first reading of that, and so the-
And then, the, the, the original question was, um, who put the first motion, and who, who seconded it? I'm having trouble finding the minutes. So, um, is that not public knowledge, or?
So what, what minutes are you looking for?
The minutes where somebody put a motion to, um, enter into this development agreement. I understand somebody put a motion in, maybe it was Ben?
Uh, I believe the motion is mine, and seconded by the deputy mayor for this development agreement, that we're discussing now.
Okay.
So, it's my, I believe it's my motion. But based on the minutes, we've got the action.
I'd like to, one question that you have to go, thank you. I'm Marjorie Hales, uh, I'm from away, so, but I've been here eighteen years now. But regardless, I, uh, I heard about this only because someone had come around with a petition, and I live on Montegoro. So I was, that was the first I heard about it. So for all purposes, when did these come out, and where were we told about them, or where could we find information on them? I didn't know anything until I saw it on Facebook tonight, I happened to click on that, 'cause I was looking for someone's name. And that's where I found out there was a meeting tonight. And how are you to vote then, if we haven't even read through the stuff? I mean, I appreciate all you've done and all the work you do. And for anyone coming in, you know, with, with, uh, housing or whatever, they're coming businesses or whatever they come in for. But with something like this, I think the residents of Digby have every right to at least have two weeks to look through all of this stuff before we come to a meeting and have to vote. Because the vote tonight is just a farce. That's just my opinion, thank you. How many have seen these before tonight?
Whenever you see them yet.
One. So I don't think we can vote with one person seeing them.
Oh, we're not, they are.
Well, they are, I don't think they can vote. We pay the tax here to help the towns.
Excuse me, a quick note following on the Janice question and answered by, uh, Consistor Wilder. Uh, about the, the agreement, uh, the minutes here, or the notes or the resume of the minutes, it says that the town approved a motion to enter into a development agreement with the Dignian Airhouse and Coalition Society to permit. The applicant has confirmed that it does not wish to execute the approved agreement. My question is, is it because they do not involve, get involved with government programs, they're, they're standalone business? Or, I, I, I don't understand really what that means.
During the next one. Stuff's coming up after this one, there's another development, there's another development coming up.
Okay, sorry, but they're, they're in the same package.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
Alright, anyone else have anything to say, or questions? If not, we will move on to the second opening remarks, and with the development agreement between- Sorry, there's a question back through my-
She's trying to yell at you.
Yeah. Just wondering, just wondering, are we gonna know if you say yes or no tonight, or tomorrow, or what's going on? It is, it is on the agenda for the next meeting, right after this meeting. So it's right up, right up to the front, so you'll know what's happening with that.
And can the public stay for that meeting?
Absolutely, all our meetings are, all our meetings are public, and, you know, I, I've been on council twenty-six years, and this is probably the most I've seen in this room for, for twenty-five years, right?
Way more.
And, you know, our, our meetings are the same time every month, first Monday, third Monday. And all our, our minutes for those meetings are on, are on our, our website, so you can read those. And, you know, being in business as well, advertising is very, very hard these days, to, to where do you go? Like someone mentioned, where Gary go? You know, here we are, we have our own radio stations now.
You gotta put it on Diggie Talk.
And it can be on Diggie Talks, and it depends how it's interpreted on Diggie Talks, but you're on the- That's where people see things.
Well, let me show a hand here, regarding this, just to let you know a wee feel before you take the vote on our behalf.
I think we understand-
I think that's quite, quite proper, that's enough.
I think, I think we understand how you feel.
Well, I think, I think-
Absolutely, you know.
No, well, I think, I think it's important to me, though, you know.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, two people have spoken for it, and the rest haven't said something, and some have more, you know, concerns, which, in a development agreement, we will address those concerns before it is developed, right? So, can assure you that.
That's all about democracy, that's, I think that's just where it mentions.
Yeah.
I have, I have a concern.
Yeah.
Name, Jane Robshaw, retired home three years ago, I'm a twenty-year veteran of the Canine Forces.
Thank you for your service.
I'm from Langford, BC. They built a brand-new building, Langford, BC is now a city. In the last three le, in the last three years since I've been home, Langford's a city now. Every time I went on a deployment, there was a whole new subdivision coming here every time we came home. On for me, every time, ding, ding, ding. They built a brand-new building. Tenants start moving in, tenants had to move out, 'cause building inspector didn't do the job correctly. The short company came in, condemned the building, a brand-new building, condemned it because the building inspector, I, I know we've got great contractors here, amazing contractors, it's our, it's our building, our, our building inspector's ready for just sets a mass project. Chris and I were at a meet in last week, what was it? September? We had an RCMP. RCMP, nobody talked to RCMP about this, did they? They over, they had over seventeen hundred-plus calls last month alone. We are short, guaranteed at least five officers in this town. I was born and raised here. And we used to have one of the biggest police force around.
We also used to have one policeman.
Exactly.
Right?
Now we don't have that. I do believe, yes, I'm hundred percent, hundred, twenty percent, I'll get behind anything that gives us low-income homes here, anything, and more homes. I live on Victoria Street. I've been in big cities, I moved from Ottawa, I've been to Vancouver, I've been to major, all the major cities, and Victoria Street now is getting like a city. Get out of my driveway in the morning, luckily I'm retired, I'm watching guys go to work, I drink a coffee on my deck. But I don't, you know, it's just, but down to that building inspector, Chris is an amazing guy, great guy. I will not knock him by any means, but is he ready to do major inspections that this building is that are required? Or is a guy coming in for power facts?
Can I answer that?
Yes.
You're not in charge.
No, sorry.
Can I answer that?
Sorry, sir.
Just an answer.
Can you, sir?
Yes.
So we use engineers, we don't require, we don't rely on local inspectors. Local inspectors did not have the knowledge that they need, and that's not mocking local inspectors. It's the, the technology that we use hasn't reached here yet, but we use, we use structural engineers.
Well, so did Langford, BC, right?
Yeah.
And their engineers failed them.
Then their engineers should have been shot.
Exactly, should have failed them, right? But I think you'd be rich enough here, you gotta get whatever the hell you want. My problem is against ours, yeah, it's the firefighters. As an engineer, I'm the firefighter aboard a ship, too. We train every day. We've trained for fire every day, don't mind that ship's long side or rope to see. We are training, training, training. Is our firefighters able to go up four sets of stairs? And when we train, we just don't do four, we do twelve. The building's four, we do twelve, we make sure, also, this building's that have elevator. Who gets people, if people get trapped, have them, you know, can't happen. People get trapped in that elevator, who gets them up?
Well, we've got people over the tops, elevator, firefighters.
Yeah, two fours? Where are you going, talking, what, four?
Probably five, two in the canopy, or?
So four fours? So four fours. Are we trained to get great people in place for that? I do support, like I do believe we need this. And I hate to say I'm kind of oversharing the way too. It's like, we need a city dump. People don't want a next door to them. But here's my bag of trash. Can you make it disappear, please? Right? We do need you. But it's like right now, I don't think we're ready for you. You guys have not done enough homework. Because like I said, it doesn't affect traffic. Come sit on my doorstep with me tomorrow morning. I'll make coffee and see how much traffic just comes to school. That's in the summer months. No traffic for school. Come sit on my deck with me. I'll make you another pot of coffee. You gotta answer those questions. Have a vote right now. Telling you, it's not your best, like, you're not doing your due diligence. But I do support this gentleman right here. We do need him.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to the developer. Jamie, if you would like to speak. He's been very cooperative with us speaking about about him. So if we can give him the same respect for him to speak his way. Jamie, you want to come up front or you're okay there?
Well, I'm okay here.
Yeah.
Is that okay here?
Yeah.
You want to speak up for us back here, buddy?
I'll meet you.
Back to the microphone. Got too many timbits. Come on.
So I agree with the point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Yes.
Too many conversations going on back here. I'm having difficulty hearing what's going on there. And I've already got my ear, my ear needs turned up.
Okay.
Is it okay if I talk to them facing you?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm not being eager. I have to face him. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Go. Okay. My name's James Wallace. Yes, I'm from B.C. But I moved here a year ago. I decided that I liked this place enough. I thought I might make it home for a while. I've been working on this project for a year and a half. I, as the developer and the builder, have towed every line that I was told that I had to walk. As I said, I, I'm not a part of the politics of this town. The town tells me you do this, 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 and this, and maybe we'll let you do this. So I've done everything I was told to do. I was told, everything that was mandated to me to do. I've done that. The last thing I want to do is to come into a little town like this and piss everybody off. It, well, regardless of what my intentions. So I bring, I'm a builder. That's what I do. I build houses. I build buildings. I put homes together for people who need them. That's what I do. When I came here, I found that beautiful piece of land and I thought I wanted to build on that piece of land. It was sitting there. It was empty. Nobody else wanted it. So I bought it.
Quiet, please.
No, no, that's, no, that's, I can answer that. Okay, so No, 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 onto you. You asked, you, okay, you asked me. Four stories. There we go. Okay, so when it comes to affordability, when it comes to houses these days, you know, you can quote stats, you can quote everything from, that you want to quote. But we've got to find a better way of dealing with it. We can't just let our government keep trying to throw money at us and solve our housing problem. We got to figure out how we're going to do it. And as a builder, that's my job. So when it comes to the question of how many stories do we go? A four-story building is your best bang for your buck, if I can use that term. It gives me the ability to reduce my costs per square foot enough so that when I have a rent target, I'm going to be able to make that target. I don't rely on government funding. I create all private funding. And by using private funding, it's a business. We have to show profit. But by being able to build economically, you can still show that same profit to the people who need the profit, who put the money in, but you can still control the rent. And that's what I tried to do. It's not the most beautiful building in the world. I never said it was. I'm certainly not going to win any architectural awards. I know, it's ugly. But I didn't design it other than from the practical point of view. It was designed for cost-effectiveness. It can be dressed up. It can be dolled up all you want. But it is what it is. I mean, I hit a certain cost per square foot. That allows me to charge my rent where I have to charge it, where the people of town of Digby can afford it. That's, that's all I tried to do. So as far as my apologies to you, the town, I apologize. If I've done something to offend you, I don't know how. I don't know you. I didn't know my buildings would offend anybody, but apparently they have. So regardless of whatever conditions the council puts in front of us, I, I've spent all the time I'm going to spend here. So this is my vote. I'm either getting my DA and I'm going to build or I will move on and I'll build somewhere else. It's, it's okay. You guys, maybe somebody will come along and somebody will build something. I don't know. But that's the way it is. So I don't know. I can't address any other questions. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the, unless anyone has anything else, I don't want to move on if someone has anything else to say. Gary, you want to go again?
In two minutes, I'll go make a quit. I was outside and I heard that this committee's going to vote to proceed with the proposal. Is that correct?
It is the item E, oh, sorry. It's under business arising from the last minute, yes.
Okay, so the council's vote will either be nay or yea to proceed with the proposal as presented by this group of people. When I was up here the first time, I mentioned the referendum. What happened to that? So if there's not going to be a referendum, I would like the council to set the so-called proposal aside for another meeting. The reason why I say that is because this is so important that I talked about and I know the people behind me, it's very important to us. I think it should be looked at a little bit closer. And it should be a little bit more research done on the cost of the infrastructure that we, the taxpayers, have to pay. So we know upfront what we're getting ourselves into. Now, I understand what the gentleman said about he's a builder. That's how he makes his money. We all know that. And he's proposing something that he figures, in his mind, is good for the area, for housing. But we all know, you don't go into business just to make everybody happy. You go in the business to make this, okay? And there were some good points brought up by other people that I heard earlier about what if the company goes belly up and all this stuff, okay? Which, these are good questions. So all that should be looked at. And we need more research so that we can come up with the proper vote, yea or nay, for this proposal. Because I myself, as you know me over the years, before I jump into something, I want to know what she's got to say, he's got to say, all these people, and then we'll come to a solution. Okay? Okay.
So I, I just want to make a comment that a lot of this stuff we did get just tonight as well. So a lot of stuff has come in like the last week or so and actually is, is late as Friday and as late as this morning as well, so.
It's late.
Four thirty. It's late as four thirty this afternoon. So I certainly respect what you say when it comes to that. Gary?
Gary?
Gary, Gary Tucker.
Yes, sir.
Well, I certainly respect what you say about going through things because we've got a lot of stuff as, as late as this afternoon at four thirty. All right?
Yeah, I understand that. I think that before anybody goes to anything, even individualized decisions, it has to be totally looked at before you make the jump because how many times have we jumped on things and we said, oh, I wish I hadn't have done that? Okay?
Okay, thanks, Chris. All right, there's nothing else about this development?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I just want to take a moment to say thank you to everyone who has shown up tonight, who has given us feedback and say that, well, I guess from my standpoint, I'm sorry we didn't do a better job engaging you all prior to this. That we have to look internally and get better at making sure we're communicating with the people who are affected if we're looking at development agreements, so that we are not delaying processes for developers, but also so that we're including everyone when we do this. And we will get better at it and we will make sure in the future that we don't have situations like this. Well, always nice to see everybody out here.
It is.
Where we don't have everybody here at the last minute to say, I want to say something. I want to give my feedback. So you've got my commitment that we'll do our best to make sure those changes are addressed so that better communication is given to areas that are affected by future potential development agreements. And thank you, Jim, for being here.
All right, can I take a question?
It's Leona Mosher, this is who I am. I just would like to say on your comment, that's true. As I resident in Digby, I'm not in town anymore, but I live in Smithville. But people in this town are the last people to know anything. And I find you make a lot of plans in the town and we know nothing. But you find out about it a day before something's going to be signed. And for one, I'm just speaking on behalf of everybody here in the town. How many people in this room know about the plan and place of the town of Digby? I think very few. There's probably few hands could go up. We know nothing. We're the last to know and we live here. So yes, it does need, the people and the town and the community do need to know before you make decisions, what decisions you're going to make. Thank you.
And I'll just echo what Consistor McCormick said as well. That is, that is my commitment as well to introduce better communication so everyone knows what's going on. And moving forward, communication, no, no problem. All right, anything else here?
Yeah.
I just want to add one more comment on the process. So the process that this application has gone through is the same process that Mr. Manzer went through with his development on that street. Exactly the same. So there's nothing that in this process that wasn't done through Mr. Manzer's development.
And we had no one up for Mr. Manzer's development either.
Mr. Manzer's development has contributed to this town ever since he started.
Okay, he certainly has. Absolutely has, yeah. And been a very part, good part of council meeting here as well. Okay, so if there's nothing else for that, anyone else for this development? If not, we'll move on to the other development. I don't want to cut anybody off. Does anybody out in the back have anything they want to address?
They do, but I think they just
Just talk to people at the door.
Many of them you can't see.
All good?
All good, thank you.
Jamie? All right, we'll move into the remarks on the development agreement with the Dignian Area Housing Coalition. Turn that over to Chris.
So just as a side, Mr. Manzer developed the same process, the application that we're speaking about right now.
Just to hold on for a second. We'll just wait till someone leave. If those are leaving, we'll just hold off so we can hear. For those leaving, thank you very much for coming out tonight and giving your reviews. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, please, when you get your attention. Thank you very much.
So this new public hearing, public hearing concerning an application for the redevelopment of the C S M motel property actually goes back to 2023. The Dignian Area Housing brought an application forward to reuse the repurpose, the former C S M motel structure for supportive housing. That housing was to be delivered through a government program. The reuse of the property was intended to provide for short-term housing opportunities and include areas, common areas, office support, and a space for the association itself. The town approved that proposal for the conversion of the motel for an eighteen-unit housing project. That was done in March of 2024. So the application came in late in, or midway through 2023. And that application went through the same process that we were doing. So we've actually had an application reviewed by the planning committee, a recommendation made to the town council, a public hearing held, and the project approved. Following that approval, the applicant confirmed that they did not intend to proceed with the development. So maybe somebody was talking earlier about developments that get approved at council but don't happen on the ground. This is one of those. In July of 2024, the applicant came back and resubmitted a development proposal for the same property. But this time, it wasn't for the reuse of the existing structure. It was for the construction of new buildings and for the provision of thirty-four housing units instead of the eighteen that was originally proposed. So essentially, the applicant redid the proposal. The development agreement is a site-specific approval. So by changing the building form and the number of units and the layout of the site, they needed to reapply for a new agreement. So it's important, I think, to understand the nature of a development agreement. Basic zoning says if you're this far from that line, that far from that line, you're doing this type of unit and you're not higher than that. Have at it. A development agreement is site-specific and development-specific. So what we have tonight in front of us is the same applicant, the same property, but a different actual building form and a larger number of units. It is still supported by government housing programs. So they are delivering housing units that they have received approval for through provincial and federal programs. Still the same applicant and essentially the same product being delivered, but increased number of units and a changed building form. When the first application was reviewed, like we did earlier tonight or talked about earlier tonight, the planning committee looked at your policy I M seventeen, which again is your criteria for development agreements. We, they, the committee looked at adequacy of infrastructure, adjacent road networks, school facilities, fire protection. adjacent road networks, school facilities, fire and protection requirements, potential costs relating to the town, suitability of the site, the nature of the development itself in terms of dimensions and shapes, the, and any other kind of general policy considerations that are in the strategy. So again, back to policy IM7. The recommendation that the committee provided, uh, council in August, basically evaluated the criteria for the revised increased number of units, but essentially found the same outcome that on the balance, the development represented or, or was compliant with the intent of the strategy in that the infrastructure was present, that the developments could be accommodated both in terms of the neighborhood compatibility as well as the neighborhood infrastructure and road network, that the proposal did not represent, um, concern with respect to financial impact on the town, and that the site itself lent itself to redevelopment for residential purposes. So, this is kind of a very short statement because this project has already been in front of council and actually already been approved. The developer has revised it, so we, this is more of a, I'm not gonna say administrative, uh, process, but it's a requirement of the Municipal Government Act that because of the changes, we come back to council and, uh, seek approval for a revision to, or basically revision to the site plan and therefore a new development agreement. So following, uh, the review of the residential policies and in particular your, uh, criteria for, uh, development agreements, the planning committee, uh, has recommended the council enter into a development agreement with Digby Area Housing for the purposes of construction of a 34-unit residential, uh, uh, structure for development, containing two structures on a former Siesta Motel property. Yep, that's, that's the recommendation.
Thank you, Chris.
Uh, written sheet. The one from, uh, we have a written submission from Marilyn McDonald. It was included in the same, uh, included, uh, both proposals in the one letter. So, I'm not even circulating. Reference here.
So once again, uh, if anyone has any, any comments, we entertain any oral comments now. If you'd like to step up the microphone to, to voice anything on this project.
I guess Troy Van Castle, Digby. Uh, I've just got some concerns where I have Sea Winds Motel across the road. I'm not against the build, but if this is a summer build, it's gonna affect, uh, it may affect my, uh, my business, whereas there's gonna be loud noises, construction, uh, possibly dirt coming into, you know, through the dust and, and buildup of it. So, uh, is there any kind of time? A winter build obviously wouldn't affect me because I'm not open in the winter, or I can close in the winter, but a summer build would definitely affect me. I guess my second question would be, forgive me because I'm not familiar with it, but is there a selection process in the tenants that's gonna be there? Just again, because I have a motel directly across the road. Um, noise, uh, parties, that sort of thing is, is gonna super affect me. Uh, and, uh, we'll get complaints, obviously, through the motel. Thank you.
Okay, so your last point, uh, the tenants will be selected through the housing coalition. They, uh, they will have staff and, uh, that, that, you do that. And as far as the construction, at this, this point, this is, uh, step one. Uh, this gives them the ability to do what they want. But I don't believe that they secured 100% of the funding at this point. So, it'd be premature for me to even guess or, uh, put out when construction will start. Obviously, they get to demolish the, the building that's there if they go through this plan, but, uh, I don't have time on it at this point.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just have a question on, uh, you said you're going from 18, was it before 18 units? Was it 18 units to begin with, and now it's gonna be 30?
The applicant.
Yeah.
Has in, has submitted an application for 34 units. The initial application was for 18.
18, okay. I, I'm familiar with the, where the Siesta was, or is, was, whatever, in that corner. Uh, what it's gonna be, the, the, uh, the size of the housing then for, to get 34 applicant, uh, housing units in there? Are they gonna be 800 square feet or something like that, or are they gonna be larger? Is it gonna be one bedroom, two bedrooms? I, I just don't understand how you can get that many into that section and be able to get out onto the main road from that. That's a very sharp corner to come around from downtown, uh, going up. It's just, I just can't visualize that many on that property. Unless it is going to be just small housing, like, you know, 800 square feet or something like that?
If I can address that, uh, a bit earlier, it looks like 17 studio apartments. Uh, 16 one-bedroom and one two-bedroom, uh, units are listed in the, in the plan that they've given us. So, so it is relatively smaller, uh.
Yeah, a studio would be, but what about the one-bedroom and the two-bedroom?
I believe the one-bedroom and two-bedroom are, are smaller as well. Uh, I don't have the plan right here currently, but, uh, as far as I understand, I think it's, is it three? Uh, three stories for that one? Two, two.
Oh, there're gonna be two, two stories then on, okay. I thought it was all on one, this one.
Okay, yeah, two, two stories.
Cause I couldn't quite visualize that many places on that one, that corner there. Yeah, but there, there's no, again, there wouldn't be. What about parking? There's parking for all of them then too, or one or a few cars?
Yeah, that cycle's right back to First Avenue, right?
Yes, I know. Yeah, yeah.
We need to talk to the plan.
Should be, should be in that.
Yeah.
Well, I have those, okay, I didn't realize it was in there.
Well, I got two of the same things, so I can have them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, I don't actually see the 81 Montague in the paperwork here. The plans. There's only Thomas Field.
Separate paper.
Yeah, yeah. I have the agenda and then I have Thomas Field plans. Right there one there. Drafted from that plan.
Right at the corner there.
That's where I got this from.
But there should be another one.
There's another one.
Thank you, my apologies.
Anyone else have anything to say about this project, this development? No, we're all good. All right, uh, as soon as Councilor McCormick gets back here. Okay, uh, motion for adjournment for the, uh, the public hearing, uh, meeting. So, secondary, second, second Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.